They're probably doing Zoom.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, we're going to talk about the meeting to order in a moment. I want each council person, since they're not physically in the room, to announce online. So if you could begin, uh, beginning with, uh, Kaseya.
Uh, here.
Mr. Volknight?
Here.
Scott?
I think he's calling you.
Scott?
Was that an attendance call for Jan? Scott, we're having difficulty hearing.
I'm asking if you're present. Uh, Jonathan Garza?
Here, online.
Online, uh, uh. Mr. Laska?
Here.
And myself, I'm here. Does that get everybody?
No. I'm here.
I assume I heard Ms. Scott's voice, so I think she's here.
Present, here in the conference room.
We do have a forum and all members are present, so I'll begin leading. To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible by liberty and justice for all. If there are no announcements or reminders tonight, uh, no public employee recognition, are there any items from council?
Yes, I'd like to say something, please.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Lee.
I would like to thank you very much for your cards, flowers, and expressions of sympathy. Your support and prayers at this difficult time were very much appreciated and a great comfort to me and my family during the loss of my mother last week. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jill C. and I are simply to express to you as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say something also.
Okay, Ms. Scott?
I would simply like to thank you and city staff and everybody that is in administration and is handling this crisis with incredible grace and valor and just thank you for all the many hours and your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and I will, uh, um, like most of that compliment to our staff. They are absolutely incredible, and we should all be proud of the work they're doing. Any other items from council? Hearing none, I'll move into citizens' communication. Those that are on the Zoom meeting, if you have any comments to make at this time, uh, please do so by raising your hand on Zoom.
Raise your hands, and we're going to see them.
Seeing none, was it? Jan, do we have any?
We have none.
Seeing none, I'll close citizens' communication. There are no items with public hearings. We'll move into the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
There are four items on the consent agenda tonight. They are first, the adoption of the minutes from the March seventeenth, twenty twenty council meeting. Second, a professional services agreement with urban engineering for the design of floodgates in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars, which will be reimbursed to the city as part of its community block development grant disaster relief program award. Third is designating authorized signatures for the Hurricane Harvey infrastructure CBG Disaster Recovery Program Contract Number Twenty dash zero six five dash zero five five dash C one sixty-five. And fourth is a community development block grant programmatic agreement with Perpetual Health Home to complete a public facility renovation project in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I'll move.
Second.
Conclusions seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Saying? So, action items for council, we would now move into, uh, city manager reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jan, how are you going to close the presentation?
So if you're doing it with Joe, Joe will should be able to present. Do you want to do yours first?
Yes.
It would be yours first?
I'm going to take these a little bit out of order just for the sake of topics to be discussed. Um, we did have on the agenda doing some city manager's report from our CBB Department, Explorer Victoria. Uh, you may recall that the last few meetings we've been doing annual reports and just general updates from the department. So we want to talk about what tourism is doing, uh, but we also want him to hit on some of the impact that COVID nineteen is having on some of the event cancellations, and we'll get touch on that. We also have our police chief to provide an amended, uh, risk profiling report. And we did have on the agenda our communications director talking about what the communications team has also done, but we've actually decided to, uh, push that out to a different meeting. Her and her team have been extremely busy recently, uh, with everything that's going on, and make that, um, that presentation is as good as it can be. Um, so for tonight, we'll simply have, uh, initial conversation on potential impact of COVID nineteen, followed by, uh, Chief Craig, and then, or actually, Joe will follow myself, and then we'll end with Chief Craig. Um, I can control it through here? Okay, so can anybody, can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, it's up on the screen. Okay. It's not changing on me.
There you go.
Yeah. Did you just click it? Okay, so we want to start by just talking a little bit about what's going on from an economic standpoint. Of course, a lot of that's going to impact, um, what's going on here locally. Um, it's very difficult to capture local data, but obviously, things that are going on across the country, we anticipate, um, seeing those trends here as well. Uh, this specific slide that's in front of you shows sort of an initial jobless claims, and you can see how those have skyrocketed, which of course is an indication of the unemployment rate. And if you go to the next slide, um, that also shows that the unemployment rate has increased. Um, we obviously are seeing a lot of folks unemployed, which impacts, uh, money that's being taken in income, which impacts their ability to purchase goods and services. We, of course, also are dealing with, um, this stay-at-home order, which is also limiting businesses' ability to, uh, stay open. Uh, of course, there's a conversation about essential versus non-essential, and obviously, the non-essential businesses, uh, will suffer a little more than essential businesses. Um, and all of that kind of plays into what we're trying to capture with our sales tax, um, revenue expectation. Um, on the business side, just so you all know, we, we have begun a conversation with the Sales Tax Development Corporation, uh, about that impact on businesses. The Sales Tax Development Corporation is the, is the board that's appointed by city council to focus on economic development, and so we do want to have more specific conversations with that board about what's going on here locally. And we had a meeting yesterday where we began sharing some of that information, as well as what some of our community partners, like the Small Business Development Center out of U H V is doing. Um, and we also presented information to them related to the small business loans that are funneling down through the SBA, as well as some challenges and some gaps and some areas of opportunity that that brings to the table. Um, if council is interested in any of that, I'd be happy to discuss that offline, or I'd be happy to, uh, add an item to the next city council agenda where we can take a deeper dive on the impact on businesses. But for now, this presentation is focused on our impact on our revenues. Um, if you go to the next slide, one, one of the things that I want to, that I want to, uh, start off with is just some of our expenditures. Uh, many of you are familiar with the process that came after Harvey in terms of how the city tracked those expenditures, how the city tracked time spent, and the process that went into getting reimbursement, uh, through FEMA in that process. And as you know, we were responsible for twenty-five percent of that. And so I wanted to show you where we were thus far. The tracking of these expenditures started earlier in March, um, and payroll started, tracking payroll started in mid-March, but this gives you kind of a sense of what our sort of expenditures, quote unquote, have been related to this crisis that we, once it's done, anticipate, um, filing, going through the process to get seventy-five percent reimbursed. Of course, the things that you see on there are related to cleaning supplies, meals associated with our operations, personal protective equipment, that's what the P P E is, virtual meetings. Of course, we've had to transition a lot of our operations into virtual meetings, and as much as I'd like to say that we were a hundred percent prepared to do that, the reality is we've had to, for some expense, in order to facilitate that. Um, we mentioned that we are, uh, the city is absorbing the cost of the hand washing stations that have been distributed throughout our community. There's been a lot of coverage on those. Um, of course, there's some signage. Windows at City Hall, those are windows. Before we decided to shut down city facilities, we were looking at how we could make, um, our operations a little safer. And so those windows that, that are referenced there are updating the windows that are part of the city secretary's, um, operation, um, just to make sure that the distance is what it needs to be, and that the glass and the communication device from the glass, everything is as smooth as it can be in order to, uh, limit that contact. Of course, we since then have decided to shut down our city facility from public access, but nevertheless, that expense is on there. And of course, like in any expense, payroll is always your biggest expense. And so that's, that's able to capture the payroll of our personnel that have been, um, associated with the COVID response from our first responders to the O C staff, um, and others. Elected officials that have been able to participate in those, um, meetings, such as the mayor and Mayor Pro Tense Lee, uh, their time, since they're not salaried, can be utilized as in-kind through the concept of volunteer hours. And so moving forward, if any other elected official, um, plays a role in, in, in anything, we're able to capture that as part of the twenty-five percent. Before, any questions on, on those expenditures? So far, they're pretty straightforward. Uh, we'll make it a point to update you as much as we can. Obviously, these expenditures will increase as the crisis, uh, unfolds. The next topic we want to hit on is our financial projections. Uh, know that going into these projections, there were a couple of things that we took into account. Uh, one was the assumption that the stay-at-home orders and things would go back to business by June first. Uh, currently, the stay-at-home orders run through the end of April, uh, but we took the approach of, of, you know, not really knowing what's going to happen in May. And so almost all the information that'll be shared with you, excuse me, assumes that there will be some level of going back to normal, quote unquote, um, by June first. Um, if that doesn't happen, then we'll have to revisit, um, a lot of the projections that will be shared with you today. One of the things that I think is, is important to note, um, that you'll notice here as I go through this, through this table, is going back to our budget development process for fiscal year twenty. Uh, you may recall Gilbert, uh, during that presentation last summer, talking about being very conservative with our budget revenue. Uh, he along with our consultant, uh, recognized that there would be a downturn in the economy this year. They didn't quite realize that it would be the extent of a pandemic causing it, uh, but that causes us to be very, uh, conservative with our revenue projections for sales tax. Not all communities can claim to do that. A lot of the communities that you're seeing out there having to do major job cuts, um, hiring freezes, sort of major type of, of, of changes is because they rode the wave of the increase of sales tax, and we didn't. So for instance, what this shows you, excuse me, what this shows you in two thousand and nineteen was that we had, uh, twenty-five point six million dollars come in in sales tax combined. That's combined meaning the portion that Sales Tax Development Corporation gets and the portion that goes into the general fund. In the next several slides, I will split that out for you. Um, but it would have been very easy for us to budget twenty-five point six million dollars, or even assume that it would continue to increase, but we did not. We budgeted twenty-four point five. And so because of that, we're, we're seeing a decrease, but not to the extent that we would have. Um, this table also takes into account a fourteen percent decrease in monthly collections beginning this fiscal year and running through the first, running through the remainder of this year and almost the first half of next fiscal year. And that's, those are the areas sort of in blue, um, and those show the fourteen percent. Uh, this scenario begins to recover at four percent increases beginning in March of twenty twenty-one, and that's kind of highlighted with the greenish background. And you'll see in both of those years that the total is less than what we budgeted for this year, and even much less than what the actual was in twenty nineteen. All in all, with both funds combined, meaning Sales Tax Development Corporation and General Fund, we're expected to, to, to see about a four percent, uh, decrease from what was budgeted, or roughly a little shy of a million dollar split between both funds. Um, the next, uh, graph kind of shows you what that looks like visually. Um, so this shows you the actual for two thousand and nineteen, which is that darker color. The green color shows you that we were actually doing really well earlier this calendar year, this year. Um, and of course, the dash kind of shows what we just shared earlier, which is a decrease, um, in that revenue. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see how it's projected to be for next fiscal year, taking into account those five months. And so you can see towards the left of this graph that that dashed sort of, I don't even know what color that is, purple-ish brown color, is significantly lower. And so in these scenarios, we don't anticipate getting back to our pre-sort of COVID nineteen levels until at some point in late fiscal year twenty-one, or not until fiscal year twenty-two. There's a lot of factors that go into that. Um, we know that it's a long road ahead. We know that, um, habits of people are going to change, you know? Magically, people aren't going to be employed all of a sudden overnight, and so magically, people aren't all of a sudden going to have disposable income to be able to spend. And so we need to take into account the long road ahead, uh, that'll get us back to that. The next couple of slides will kind of break it down between the Sales Tax Development Corporation and the General Fund. At our meeting with the Sales Tax Development Corporation yesterday, we went through this specific table and shared with them, I'm not going to repeat what I just said about budgeting conservatively and the fourteen percent decrease for the rest of this year, um, but you can see that the impact of Sales Tax Development Corporation is four hundred and thirty-two thousand, which is about five percent below budget. The next slide, um, shows what it would be for the General Fund, which is about five hundred and sixty-five thousand, or about three and a half percent below budget. Next slide, please. Uh, General Fund, to continue off the General Fund, I want to focus on our big funds. And so General Fund, of course, is also made up of non-sales tax. We didn't really include anything related to, uh, property taxes. There, there's a lot of literature out there about what impact, if any, COVID is going to have on property values. Um, nobody really knows. Um, and so there's still, the jury's still out on, on what, what impact, if any, that's going to have. Nevertheless, this is where we stand now with the, with the non-sales tax revenues for General Fund. Some of these might be surprising to you, but they go, they also are attributed to the fact that we budgeted very conservatively. And so, for example, the landfill franchise fee, we expect that to actually come in over budget. Uh, earlier this year, we was projecting above budget, and quite frankly, there hasn't been a downturn in, um, landfill operations throughout this whole COVID, um, time. If anything, we've actually seen it ramp up a little bit. Uh, at some point later on, we'll provide a, an update on the impact on operations. That's in a separate meeting, and Darryl can speak to the impact that people spending time at home, cleaning out their houses, and the impact that's had on multi-pickup and trash pickup and all of that. Um, anyway, waste management franchise fee, though, we do foresee going down. This is predominantly because of the commercial and the businesses that are closed. If businesses are closed, they don't have any trash, and if they don't have any trash, it's not getting picked up, and fees aren't being collected. And so we're anticipating, um, this revenue from this franchise fee going down. Liquor licenses and construction permits, we anticipate going up slightly, assuming, again, that we're back to a, a normal-ish state by the beginning of June. Um, this also takes into account a conservative budget approach going into this year and the fact that the first quarter and a half of this fiscal year that we're in came in slightly above budget. Parks revenue, no surprise there. Uh, we expect those revenues to go down. Uh, these park revenues are mainly due to the fact that we're having to cancel a lot of events, a lot of the pavilion rentals, leagues, all sorts and sorts of things that have been canceled up to this point. Um, and again, this, this only accounts for a couple of months, so it could, it could be, uh, greater decline if, if we continue to have to keep city operations closed. This parks revenue does not account for the loss of revenue in the community center, uh, or the loss of revenue in the golf course. Uh, those, as you may, if you may recall, those are separate funds, not general funds. Um, but obviously, those are having an impact. For example, with the month and a half that the community center has been closed, we anticipate losing revenues there of about twenty thousand dollars. Um, with the golf course, with the month and a half that it's been closed, anticipate revenue loss of close to a hundred thousand dollars, um, at the golf course alone. Um, and we can talk a little bit about that, um, later, but that gives you a sense of the, the operations under parks. Uh, going back to the General Fund, ambulance revenue was tracking very good, and so that's expected to come in high. Municipal court revenue is no surprise, no surprise there either. Of course, municipal court facilities closed down, things are being delayed, um, and so that'll naturally have an impact on those revenues. Interest revenues are also expected to go down just because of the Federal Reserve and some of the changes going on at that level. Um, but all in all, that's kind of where we stand with the General Fund. Uh, before I talk about hotel occupancy tax, any questions related to General Fund? I know we're throwing out a lot of information.
At the end.
Okay, at the end. Got it. You're going to wait for the question, please. Okay. Uh, so hotel occupancy tax, this, 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 so on the hotel occupancy tax, we actually get updates on a weekly basis. Uh, so hotels report into a system called a STAR report, and that gets, um, shared, or I should say, our staff has access to that reporting tool on a weekly basis. Um, this is just to give you a sense of what the fourth week of March looked like, which was a decline of about fifty percent in the occupancy rate of our hotels in our community. Um, I can tell you that in other communities, it's actually a lot worse. Um, I wish that I, in some ways, I wish we could say that it's a lot worse, because that would mean that we have a lot of people coming in here for tourism stakes. Uh, but we know that there are a lot of people that stay in our hotels that are non-tourism related, whether it's work-related, workers, long-term stays, and so that helps with the occupancy rate. Um, next slide shows you what some of the projections are, are, are planned for the hotel occupancy tax. Um, there's a lot of numbers on here, and so I want to focus your attention to the second column. This second column is, is what the projections are for, um, this fiscal year that we're in now. You'll see that for the quarter ending at the end of March, it's projected to be a total of thirty percent. Uh, keep in mind that COVID started in mid-March, and so that fifty percent decrease in occupancy that I shared with you, that was just for the fourth week in March, isn't truly reflective of how the whole quarter or the whole month, quite frankly, um, operated. And so we anticipate the first quarter of this calendar year being a thirty percent decline, and we'll, and we expect that to continue for the rest of this fiscal year, with the quarter that finishes in June to come in at, at a decrease of sixty percent, and the quarter ending at the end of the fiscal year in a decrease of fifty percent. Uh, all in all, we anticipate roughly a little less than forty percent decrease, um, this year from last year. Um, however, with this specific fund, um, that's a little more manageable since it's a smaller fund. And during the, the next section of the presentation, we'll go through projects that we're putting on hold and some other, um, aspects that we're doing to try and control expenditures to be better prepared for next year. Um, there's some more information on this in terms of projections for even the fiscal year after that, simply to convey that it'll take a while for things to go back to normal, similar to what we were, uh, sharing, uh, before. So you'll notice there that, um, even the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-one, we anticipate a decrease in, uh, the revenue for the hotels. And you'll see that things don't start bouncing back to, quote unquote, a hundred percent till the quarter a year, more than a year away from today. And so, again, people's habits will change, things will slow down, and we just need to be conscious and be prepared for that. Uh, this is a very conservative approach to the information that we're sharing with you, so we'd rather be conservative, uh, and be able to share good news with you in a month or two than, than the opposite. Next slide, please. Uh, really briefly, some of our other big funds. Um, our water and waste wa, our enterprise funds have always been very strong. Uh, you all know that, um, but they're worth kind of mentioning anyway. Uh, our water, wastewater utility fund will see an impact. Obviously, with businesses being closed, they're not using water. Um, water usage might increase because people are spending more time at home. Um, one might argue that's why they need more toilet paper. Uh, but, um, we do anticipate an impact there. Again, this is kind of an unknown. Um, we also announced that we weren't going to be charging late fees. We weren't going to be, uh, doing cutoffs, people that can't pay through the end of April. All of that is going to have an impact on our revenues there. How significant to be determined, which is why, uh, Gilbert took the approach of, of doing a stress test, assuming a shortfall of two point two million dollars. That also includes us putting on hold, or not putting on hold, pushing out a project to next fiscal year related to North Height Space Seven, and we'll get to that when we talk about the projects that we're, uh, recommending, um, pushing out to next fiscal year. But we, but nevertheless, uh, it's a healthy fund. All in all, you'll see that even with those changes, we're projected to have an end working capital balance of almost nine million, which equates to a four-month reserve, which of course is, is, is a healthy reserve. Next slide, please. Uh, the environmental services fund, um, again, very healthy. Our enterprises, our enterprise funds are very healthy. This will also be able to absorb. You'll notice here that even with any potential impact this year, we anticipate ending, uh, the fiscal year with a working capital balance of nine point eight million, which is a pretty significant, uh, reserve for that fund. Uh, next slide, please. Any questions on any of that before we move on to projects? All right. Okay.
I'll wait for the end.
So, one of the easiest things for us to do is to look at, um, our one-time capital expenditures and identifying some big projects that, uh, we can, uh, push out to occur next fiscal year, or simply just space them out in a way that coincides with our cash flow. Uh, and so I'm going to run through a list of some projects. I will go through them in detail, but this will give you a sense of the projects that we are, um, pushing out to next fiscal year. So on the general fund, general fund side, there's a street version for the street aspect of the North Height Space Six Street Project, a striping program. Um, we're planning on doing some grass replacement to Delio Plaza, um, and so we have that in there as well. Uh, as was, as was alluded to a little while ago, we have the North Height Space Seven Utility Project, um, associated with the utility fund. Uh, on the V S T D C front, we shared this with V S T D C Board yesterday. Um, there is a downtown business district overlay project that was about one point eight million dollars that, that we for sure decided to just not do this fiscal year. The Crestwood Drive Street Construction Project, that's actually a base three project. Uh, realistically, this wasn't a project that we're going to be able to get into this year. Base two's not even complete. And so what we did was we took the money that was allocated to that project, which was about three point four million, and just took about three hundred thousand dollars of that to do the design aspect of that project this year. And the rest of it, for purposes of word fits in the books, we pushed that out to next fiscal year, which realistically, it was going to end up there anyway. Um, and so that was an easy, easy decision there. On our motel tax fund, um, there were a couple of projects related to Riverside Stadium that we've decided to hold off on, and so those total a little shy of four hundred thousand dollars. As I mentioned earlier, uh, we're going to see an impact on our hotel revenues, and so we're also looking at that fund. Um, this fiscal year, there was also some money in the C B B, uh, budget for, uh, new welcome signs. These are the signs that are lit that say welcome to Victoria, uh, and you can find them typically near, near, uh, highway. The community center building fund, this fund is one that also gets supplemented through hotel occupancy tax dollars, and so there were some projects in there that we're also putting on hold, um, just until we kind of get a better sense of what's going on. Um, also, it's important to note that the delaying of these projects aren't solely just because of us seeing a decrease in revenues this year, but also, we want to position ourselves to be able to have working capital for next year. Um, as the graphs that I shared earlier alluded to this issue extending throughout the entire, uh, fiscal year twenty-one, it's important that we have as healthy fund balance as possible going into that year, so that we can still have conversations about the things that we want to do next year, uh, not necessarily feeling the pinch. Um, and that's, of course, a conversation that we'll talk a little later. Next slide, please. One of the other things that we're doing, of course, is just limiting discretionary spending. One of the easiest things that we were able to do there is that there's a lot of travel that's being canceled. Conferences are being canceled, and we literally, we looked and said, what if we simply just restricted travel for all employees for the rest of the fiscal year, um, and potentially, we could spend over a quarter of a million dollars by just people not going anywhere. Um, and so that's a substantial savings on that front. Uh, we put a range as opposed to a specific number, because I'm also cognizant of the fact that we have employees that, uh, necessitate CEUs for license states, certifications, et cetera. So I don't want to necessarily just tell everybody- So I don't want to necessarily just tell everybody, you know, you can't go anywhere. Uh but we do want to limit that and, and um just avoid any unnecessary travel, especially while the pandemic is still going on. And of course, we're still reviewing ongoing revenues of expenditures. Uh I will say that one of the things that other communities are doing is that they're uh establishing hiring freezes. Um I have opted to not do that. Uh we've already had conversations, and I should have put a bullet on here, but. We've already had conversations as different departments prepare for next fiscal year's budget cycle. That we will not be looking at adding personnel for next year. Uh and so I think it's important that our, one of our priorities going into next fiscal year is uh taking care of the people that we have now. Making sure that we have the funds so that we don't have to let anybody go. Uh and we could wait to have a conversation about adding additional staff to another year. But with that same logic, I also don't want to double whammy the departments and say, well, you know, we're not adding staff next year, but also you can't fill your vacancies this year. And so we want to make sure that our priority remains providing our employees the tools and the resources that they need to be, that they need to be successful. Uh because ultimately, it's gonna be our employees that get, get us through, just how they have been over the last month and a half, to get us through this entire uh journey. Uh next step is simply just for us to continue tracking our expenditures as what, as was mentioned early on. Of course, continuing to monitor, monitor the financial projections. Uh if things don't go back to quote unquote a certain level of normalness by the beginning of June. A lot of the information that was shared with you today will, will significantly change, which of course will change our approach. Um of course, what's going on will impact our conversation going into next fiscal year's budget. And so we need to revisit internally at staff what impact all of this has on our budget development calendar. And what impact it has just in general with our priorities going into next fiscal year. Uh we, of course, before COVID nineteen hit, we had a lot of projects going on. You know, we have a compensation study going on currently. We have master plans that are going on. We've got the street assessment that's going on. And so there were a lot of things that were going on that were gonna create an opportunity for conversation with council about priorities for next year. Um but at this point, the conversation needs to be more, it needs to be different. Uh the priority conversation that I expect us needing to have in the next month will revolve around uh major topics such as. Do we want to prioritize our employees? Do we want to prioritize one-time capital projects? Uh what is that balance between the two? Because quite frankly, it's gonna be a challenge for us just to maintain status quo. Um and so there are gonna have to be some sacrifices made from everybody um all around in order for us to have a balanced budget next year. Uh but, um we'll finalize the new calendar and, and, and we'll share that at the next meeting on, on our approach. So that we can have a conversation with you about those priorities. And now the question slide. So uh I know that was a lot of information.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What do you uh project as your total losses? And then what do you project as your total savings? And I also think that the sales tax won't come in that well. I think that's not conservative enough. Um but I mean, how much, if you total the savings, how much is the savings and how much do you?
Sure.
Uh expect the shortfall to be? Counting the golf course.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we, we don't have that total figure uh because we have all the funds. I know Gilbert's on the line and he may have it, but with the information that we've discussed so far, keep in mind that we have the different funds. And so if what you're looking for is sort of one number and its totality.
Well, I want a number for the general fund.
Right.
Okay, the other funds?
Yeah.
They're okay. The general fund.
Sure, sure. I don't have that number off top, top, top of my head. Gilbert, I don't know if you have it readily available from our conversation.
Uh on the revenue side, overall, we're looking at a close to nine hundred thousand dollar drop on the expense side. Uh I think I'm coming in on the budget slightly over one point two, one point three million dollars. Does that help at all?
I just think the sales tax is not conservative enough.
Sure.
I think the, the drop in that, I honestly.
Well, and we'll know that, and we'll know that soon enough, right?
We will.
Over the next couple of months, we'll really get a feel for, for what that looks like. You know, obviously, March, April, maybe May, you know, might be the worst month. Uh and once things kind of start coming back online, even if it's slowly and surely, we would anticipate those numbers to not be as, as low. As March, April, and May. So we'll know soon enough, you know, if we're off and if we are, how much. But keep in mind too, just like the conversation we had yesterday with VSTDC, that our fund balances are increasing. So we didn't share that slide here, but for VSTDC, with us taking the conservative approach that we think we're taking on, on, on revenue decrease. As well as pushing out those two projects that I mentioned, is gonna actually change our fund balance to go from about six million to about ten million. Uh with just with VSTDC alone. And so beginning from that standpoint is a significant difference. Um so even if we do do a little bit worse, that beginning fund balance is much greater than it would have been even if we would have kept things the same.
But at the next, and I understand the sales tax corporation, I've seen the numbers for that, but I like to see numbers for the.
Yeah, we can, we can, yeah, sure, yeah. For our next meeting, we, we can, we can, we will, we'll obviously have a better sense of everything. And, and we can share things more specifically, easier.
Sure.
Do we anticipate a slowdown in state? Giving us, giving us those sales tax numbers and the money with them? Do you see a slowdown?
Yeah, some of, some of that, some, some, we have seen um that the state is providing assistance for businesses to. Um delay or extend, and there are sales taxes due to the state, which will of course impact where we get it. Um but it's still too early to tell because we haven't hit that point yet.
I mean, the actual reporting from the state, when we depend upon it, to be.
Yeah, we don't anticipate any issues with the state directly.
Now, there's gonna be other money that comes in for like a CD, CDPG money coming in.
Correct.
Are there, is there other revenue that's gonna come in from federal or state?
So for those that.
Won't affect the general fund, but.
Thank you for, thank you for bringing that up. And so um as many of you might be have, have heard. There was the CARES Act that was approved by Congress uh just last week. And so there's still a lot of components of that that are being fleshed out. The only two components that have been fleshed out since last week are, one, related to transit, and then second, related to CDPG funding. Uh we already know that we're gonna be receiving three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars through our CDPG um funding process. But that's also, but that's not money that we can just use for, for anything that we want. Keep in mind that the CDPG program that we have has a five-year plan. Consolidated plan that we go through, there are public hearings that are, that we go through, a plan is presented to you, and then we spend those dollars associated with that plan. Um we actually received word today that the expectation from HUD, who funnels the CDPG dollars. Is that the new allocation is simply just gonna be an additional allocation to what we normally get. And that we still have to spend that money in accordance with our consolidated plan. And so what we envision happening is us needing to amend that plan in order to capture the needs that COVID is creating. Uh so as an example, Mike and Derek are our liaisons for the entire operation. And they have daily meetings with a lot of the nonprofits. And we know that rental assistance um and mortgage assistance are of the biggest need. And so the existing programs that exist in our community do receive some funding from CDPG dollars already. They're part of the plan. But maybe proportionally, maybe um that needs to change. Um but that in a sense, they does go through a process. I think we're still waiting to hear from HUD on um just. Further guidance on whether maybe timelines, timelines will be waived, because typically you have to wait thirty days before you do this or that. And so there's a lot of little nuances that are being figured out. But at the end of the day, we'll have an additional three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars through the CDPG program. On the transit side, we don't run a transit program, so we won't get any transit dollars. Um but those are the only components of, of, of the act that have had some clear fleshing out. Directly impacted the municipality. Okay. Councilman Scott, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Um it's specific uh to one project. You mentioned the community center roof. I'm not familiar with the status of that, but just my experience is when you need a new roof, it's not wise to put that off. So I wanted to have you give a little more information about that.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do. We, we've had that conversation internally. There was also some money in there for a roof at Riverside Stadium. Uh and so those roof projects are, are being looked at to determine, okay, is that really needed? Uh and if it is, we'll, we'll continue, we'll proceed with the roof project. Thank you for, for bringing that up.
Thank you. Yes, I think the, the stadium might be different than the community center, but that's just off the top of my head. So thank you for that.
And I got a clarification I'd like to make about property taxes. Since the values are assessed as of January first, twenty twenty. And finalized through the summer, Mr. Rainey, maybe you can help me out. I don't anticipate any change in property tax uh for next year's budget.
That's correct. What's gonna happen is that in twenty twenty two, you're gonna see some major effect then. So that's what, um, that's how I'm feeling it right now too. You're correct about the valuations coming in the next row.
Okay.
And those assessments, since they happen every January, assuming that things go back to normal-ish in June. Hopefully allows the latter part, second half of this calendar month, for things to rebound somewhat. So that once that uh assessment hits in January of twenty one, uh it's not too bad. Uh but that uh property and, and property value is a big topic of conversation. I can tell you that a lot of cities are gonna be talking, having strong conversations about the property valuations, property tax rates. Because again, some communities uh did not take the conservative approach that we did as it relates to sales tax. And so some communities will have to look at making that up through property tax revenue. Uh you may recall that the state passed a revenue cap bill that capped the property tax increase to three point five percent. But there was an exception in there that if your community went through a disaster. That you would be able to go back to the rollback rate for up to three years after the disaster. And of course, the entire state is uh going through a disaster right now. And so a lot of communities will be having conversations about um tax rates in general uh to make up for the loss of sales tax. And to be determined uh what that looks like for us, obviously, uh but that conversation is coming.
Are we gonna discuss the health fund and the shortage in the health fund too, as part of this revenue shortfall and?
Yeah, you mean in general, yeah, and I think, and I, I didn't mention it earlier. I apologize for that. Um but.
Can it be next?
Uh it can be next. Since we are talking on financial impact, I mean, we, I mean, it, it would flow nicely to go into talking about uh our health fund status. But before we do that though, does anybody else have any other questions on any of the COVID presentations? Okay, so Gilbert, um Gilbert's gonna provide an update on our health fund. I'll, I'll kind of just start that conversation off by conveying that you may, as you may recall, we recently went through a change. In our uh benefits consultant. And so that benefits consultant has been working very closely with not only Gilbert, but our HR department. And reviewing all of our financials, kind of just giving everything a second look. And so Gilbert's gonna share with you uh some of those observations and just the reality of where our health fund is currently.
Okay, thanks. That's serious. Uh therefore, man, I thought you were gonna cut me off completely. So agenda. But oh well.
Sorry.
No, it's all good. It's all good. Uh let me get this thing rolling. Uh can y'all see that screen?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and uh, and I apologize right now if I'm yelling, because I have no gauge on the volume this thing, so. Uh if I'm too loud, just let me know, because I don't know if I'm talking loud enough. I'm not talking loud enough, so. And I kept myself yelling in my office. I hear a lot of echo. So anyway, with that, good evening, Mayor and Council. You know, it's, it, it's kind of odd that I'm talking about the health plan fund while all this, we're experiencing this COVID nineteen. Uh so before I start my report, I really uh think it's fitting to extend my prayers to you and your families in Victoria. Uh and for their health and safety during these uncertain times. Uh hopefully, we've got to help to get through this process. With that said, uh tonight's report is about, as uh Mr. Redgash has said. The first, we want to talk about the financial status of the city's health plan. And also a proposal of a financial strategy on how the city can maintain a financially stable health fund in the coming fiscal year. But I think before we uh start talking about the current financial statement, status of the, of the fund. I think we gotta first talk about where we've been. In other words, what health plan policies, changes, or strategies have been implemented over the prior years? That might explain, that might help explain how we end up where we are today. So, once we understand what we have been and where we are today, then we can start talking about where we want to be in the future. You know, it does help if I start this PowerPoint, doesn't it? Okay, that's the first slide, folks. Alright, where we been? Alright, as you well know, in, in twenty eighteen, we had the Affordable Healthcare Act. Which brought a lot of dynamic changes to the city's health fund. For example, it includes a hundred percent preventive uh care. It covered all pre-existing health issues of employees. And also, we had, as you know, we had increases in medical costs from anywhere from eighteen to fourteen percent per year. In addition to that, uh the city implemented, uh it allowed the employees to opt out of the city's health plan. In order to get some other top options somewhere else on exchange, for example. Now, prior to twenty fifteen, the health plan had very, was very stable. It had over one year working capital balance, but as you have noted there. Sixteen to seventeen started dropping down. We got about half a year. In seventeen, we got a four and a half months reserve. In eighteen, close to three months reserve. In twenty nineteen, which we just completed, we're looking at two point three months reserve. Okay, so I won't give you a lot of background right now. I'm working way to where we're at now, so bear with.
Gilbert?
Yes?
Click the little, up in the upper left-hand corner, click the single thing and that, that thing will disappear. It'll, it should roll up.
Single thing. Oh, this here. Is that bothering you? Oh, I just knocked the whole thing out. We're back up. Come up?
You're up.
So what single thing you want me to cut off here?
A little window with all the people in it.
Oh, this thing?
There you go. That thing. But if you click the thing in the up, in the, the, the single thing, it'll just go to one little thing who's talking. The other one next to it.
Well, I have no people on my screen now.
That's good.
Is that okay?
That's great.
Alright, I appreciate that. Okay, now, I don't know if you're aware, but when I budgeted for um the city's. Portion of the premiums that were, uh there, there's capital based on the current premium rate in that fiscal year. Alright, I'm sorry?
Keep going.
Okay. Any given year, I used to fully staff positions in order to calculate what amount I'm gonna send to the health fund. I do not use the number of them, of participants are enrolled in the health fund. Which that translates to, it translates into, it gives me more of a cash flow that I can send over to the health fund. The only reason I do that, and over the years, my experience, I'm gonna need some extra cash to mitigate the cash flow of any increase in medical costs. So I've been doing that for, oh, for a long time. I don't know if you're aware of that. So it's about five hundred thousand dollars. It's reoccurring. In addition to that, you probably wondered, over the years, we really haven't seen any major increase in the premiums. We've had some minor tweaking. We did see some increase on the employee side. But some of the logic reason behind that are, I'm gonna talk about it in a minute. One is, for example, well. Other cities' funds' recurrent revenues were limited. In other words, if we increase the premium, we've got to come up with some extra cash flow. And general fund has a majority of the employees, at least seventy-five percent of them. That means the tax rate would have to go up, or we have to define the funding from some of the top of services, reduce it, et cetera, et cetera, in order to balance the budget. Same thing would apply to the utility rates, any other rate structure. But also, I kept, keep in mind that I also had the half a million dollar extra funded out, been sending over based on this cash flow budgeting model that I'm doing, in order, cause I knew I'm gonna eat that money. As you well know, we have, like I mentioned before, we're very sensitive to increasing the premium rates on the cities on the employee side as well. But the biggest priority here, the biggest is, not issue, but it was point here to take away is that, you know, over the prior years, the budget priority was more really centered around payroll, new staff, new services. For example, in twenty eighteen, we had a pay program for eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. In twenty nineteen, we had a two million dollar pay program. Now, there were some other items that we did, but not from a cash, from a, from a straight struc-, uh, rate structure way. We did it from, from a more of a policy instruction to plan differently. For example, we, uh, came up with the retiree savings exchange system and a health reimbursement account program. What that is basically is when, once a retiree reaches age sixty-five, they come off our plan and they get a stipend from the city where they can go buy the healthcare plan off from an exchange. At the same time, it also helped mitigate the city, uh, city's costs. We also have the healthcare risk assessment. It doesn't really deduct Medicare costs, dollar for dollar, but indirectly, the whole purpose of that program was to inform employees about the hair, uh, the health situation. If they have some issues, maybe they can mitigate, help it, and in return, it will reduce the cost in the long term. As you well know, in twenty fourteen, we, uh, came up with the high deductible along with the PPO plan. We, we didn't deal away with it, but we did do away with it in twenty nineteen when we had an extra high deductible plan. All these changes were being done in order to try to mitigate some of the costs. As you all know, also, we had some copay changes, deductible changes, and we also have a lot of network coverage. And again, just to re- remind y'all, I know it's not dollar for, it doesn't help right now, but it does address future retiree medical and, and drug costs. We took a million dollars and we set up a trust fund. Hopefully, by twenty twenty five, we're gonna look at it again. We have some money accumulated. We can start, uh, diverting some of this cost over to the trust fund. But meanwhile, I like to keep that trust fund going and build it up. And of course, over the past years, uh, as a result of, uh, the, of, uh, having less participants and our rate of vacancies has increased, we have less money going into the health fund. Now, one thing that's kinda positive side is that it takes time for a new program to start showing some trends. As, as you noted on the graph, this is strictly medical and drug claims adjusted for stop-loss reimbursement. In twenty nineteen, uh, at the beginning, we, uh, established a two health fund. As you can compare that year to the other two years, you can see a decline, a little flatten out of the medical and claim costs. It's still high, but at least we know the plan that we're implementing is having some effect on the cost. Now, where are we? Okay. The red line you see there is the working, uh, working capital. In other word, it's, it's a fund balance, the reserve. As you can see, in twenty fourteen, we had, we had a pretty good healthy, uh, working capital over one year. And twenty fif- fifteen, it drops a little. And that's only because that's where we took a million dollars out and set up a trust fund. But we still had a reserve over a million dollars. And as you know, from twenty sixteen all the way to twenty nineteen, we have a big steep on our working capital balance, just took off really heavily down. Uh, as you recall, uh, in twenty nineteen, it lands out there, but we have a one-time money back in twenty nineteen of one million dollars that we sent over to the health fund. So without that one million dollars, you will see that red line go a little further down. I, I don't know if y'all remember that, but we did send a million dollars over there. And nothing is helping us, like I said, I mentioned before, our, our medical and drug claims are down. And of course, uh, that methodology I've been using, my cash flow, is not helping too much right now, because my claims are exceeding the revenue. For example, on, on this graph here, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, the blue line is the revenue, the red line is the medical and drug claim cost. As you can note, maybe one year, there's a high variable there, but that, that, uh, philosophy or strategy of sending the extra cash was helping and also adjusting the, the health plan, structure plan was helping. But from sixteen all the way to nineteen, you start having a bigger gap over a million dollars variance between your medical costs and your revenue premiums. And the only, uh, spotlight here is that in, uh, I got, I mentioned on the, uh, on the claims, it's kinda showing a decline, but at the same time, our revenue is declining because I don't, you know, I, I, there's about a hundred people opt out of our plans and we, our vacancy rate is high right now. So, so the bottom line, this whole graph was trying to tell you, we do have a making, funding mechanism issue here. In other words, we're not generating enough cash flow right now to accommodate all these costs. Now, as was mentioned before, we hired Lockton a couple of months ago, and part of the duties is that they're going in there and get our data and they have access to all the claims and everything else. And they came back on the first column, it says Locked in twenty twenty, and they came back with that our medical and drug claims are expected to be about five point six. Of course, I went back and looked at the data myself, and I'm, I'm getting close to that same number as projection. The second line, it, it called funding rates from active enrollment. What that is, they're using their current rate structure we have in place, multiplying about the, they're multiplying that number by actual active, active participants in the plan. So for example, there might be four hundred and twenty participants at this rate structure. That's how much revenue is being generated right now, four point one month, four, four point one million dollars, excuse me. So they are projecting a deficit of about one point five million dollars. And it's coming close to what I have too in my projections. But keep in mind, like I mentioned, not, I, I, I don't know if you recall on this one, but we do have another million dollars in twenty twenty coming into the trust fund as one-time money. So with, you take that one million dollars plus the way I budgeted in excess of active employees, which is a half a million dollars, I'm gonna be okay for twenty twenty, uh, but my problem is gonna be in twenty twenty-one, I believe. Because let's take the scenario that everything stays the same. You have the same experience, the same revenue, you don't change the premiums, nothing like that. You're gonna end up in twenty twenty-one with a deficit of one point five. But we won't have that extra one million dollar one-time money, because it's a one-time, it's not reoccurring, it's, it won't be there again. But what I do have reoccurring there is that five hundred thousand dollars I built into the budget four years ago. So that's nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar deficit we're looking at next year. So bottom line, yes, who's?
That's me.
That's okay.
I just wanna make the comment that, that million dollars for fiscal year twenty came from the Texan Overpass Fund.
That's correct.
So you may, yeah, you may recall when we received those funds, we recommended during the budget process last summer to allocate a million to go toward showing up, uh, the health fund. So that's where that money came from, and of course, that money, um, just came out of unexpectedly Texan wanting to, uh, pay us that lump sum ahead of time. So I just wanna make the point that that million dollars for the one-time, you know, came from a source that was, that is not gonna be generating another million dollars next fiscal year.
That's correct. Uh, let me go, let me go back up a little bit. Yes, uh, okay.
The, the mayor asked a question about whether we have seen employees, um, increase. The answer is yes, but not all employees have our insurance.
That's correct.
And do they, so they're, just because they're coming on, they're not choosing to participate?
Some do, but a lot don't do it.
They might be on a plan with their spouse.
Correct.
Some more of them.
They have a choice. In prior years, I'm sorry.
Use your numbers, one way or the other.
No, thanks.
No, it, cause it doesn't take into account employees that, you know, if an employee isn't enrolled in our plan, they're not gonna be creating expenses for it. But he, he said he counted all employees.
No, from a budgetary standpoint.
From a budgetary standpoint, so when, so when we budget, we take the city's portion and we assume that that employee is gonna be employed all year round. But that, that portion of that five thirteen doesn't come with an employee portion. So it's very minimal amount. So that's what the five thirteen is.
Let, let, let me back up a minute here. On the second line of the funding rates from active employment, that four point one million dollars made up as follows. There are, there are four hundred and ninety active participants in our plan, okay? That means two point eight million dollars come from the city, based on Lockton, and one point four million dollars coming from employees and their families, okay? That makes up that four point one. Now, from a budget state, from my point, from the budgetary, I budgeted about three point two, three point seven million dollars. So the difference between that, what I budget and what Lockton's coming up from active is the difference of that five hundred thousand dollars you see there. So basically is that, you know, if I didn't have that strategy in place, we'll be seeing the one point five million dollar deficit for sure next year.
Saying is the reality is your funding rate difference, active versus budget should be higher than five thirteen, five ninety-seven moving forward.
No, what we're saying is.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, we're saying the assumption that he may.
But sure, he, he, he's gonna get to the recommendation and it's gonna be centered more around us paying more for our portion for the active. Nothing to do with the ones that aren't choosing to participate.
No, at all. So if I make, move forward and maybe you can, next slide will kinda explain everything. So bottom line, what we have here, uh, you know, is Lockton also acknowledged that we do have a funding mechanism. In other words, we're not generating another cash flow to support our medical and drug claims cost on an annual basis. So their recommendation is to cre- increase the city's premiums from the city side and employees in order to make up the difference. This is the same philosophy we use in enterprise fund, like on our water, water fund. You know, we, we, we create a structure to make sure we generate enough cash flow to service operating expenses in order to service our customers. And that's the same logic we wanna apply here at the health fund side. So on the next fund, you know, we're being, like I said, we, we've been at the, at a point where we had declining working capital. We've been experiencing a lot of claims higher than our revenue. So we need to really be serious about thinking about coming up with a mechanism to address that huge variance, cause you know, we noted that we tried to do a lot of things by, by policy, structure the plan, but it's when come time that we're gonna have to really face it and, and we gotta really think about our premium structure. So what I'm saying is this, on the left-hand column, where it says Locked in Actuary Total Monthly Proposed Print, that is what the premium from an actuary standpoint, they're recommending our premium should be at in order to suffice all medical and drug claims, okay? The next column is our current premium rate, that current right now, as of today, those are our premium rates. The third column is the proposed increased dollar value per the tier rate structure that you see there. And of course, you got the percentage. So what they're saying is that Victoria should go up, according to the actuary, we should generate on the, on the bottom, four point three million dollars in addition to the employees' portion. The employees' portion would be about one point three, so you take the one point three and the four point three equals that five point six million dollars I showed you in the previous graph, this, this number here. So they're saying that in order to have a fully funded health fund from the city side and employee, the city needs to adjust its premium side, not the employees, to generate four point three million dollars. And these are the increases towards the city, where the percentage, okay? So bottom line, this is what I have budgeted right now. This is my recurring budget. Right now, I'm, I'm budgeting about three point three million dollars. The general fund is a big majority of that, seventy-five percent here, two point four million dollars and all the way down. So that is what I send on an annual basis right now to the health fund. But in order to close the gap on the deficit and to generate that four point two million dollars from the city side, Lockton proposed to increase the city side, will cost extra additional funding from these other funds. The nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars of which seventy-five percent will come from the general fund. So you take my current funding, the proposed increase from the cash flow will come up with a four point three million dollars. So what we're saying here is that we're looking, let me go to next slide, sorry. What we're talking about is increasing the city's tier structure, not the employees a hundred percent and fund it, the deficit next year, if possible. I know we got all this COVID nineteen, but if not, maybe over the two fiscal year for some inflationary adjustments to it. So if we do that, we're bringing our revenues in line with our medical and drug costs. For example, currently, Lockton has collected our client current claims, it's tracking all the claims right now. And it has assumed, if we im- implemented these rate structure right now, as of February twenty, we'll be showing about three hundred and sixty thousand dollar surplus. In other words, cash flow, not a deficit. So bottom line, what, what we're saying here is like, ladies and gentlemen, is that our current structure is not capable to keep up with the current medical and drug claim costs. In order to fix that, we're proposing to increase the city size premium to bring it up. And that increase will cost us overall from a dollar value, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. We can do it next year if possible, o- over the next two years. And from my financial opinion, I think we need to do it soon, not later, cause we cannot continue on the same route. Cause, uh, you know, we're trying to find another million dollar next year, another mi- another million dollar next following year. That's not the way to, to work business. So we need to fix it. And that is my recommendation, staff recommendation, basically. And, um, I hope, uh, I didn't confuse y'all too much with it.
One way or the other, you're gonna pay for it. You're either gonna do it the way we're doing it, by supplementing it when we have to. We're gonna face the reality of funding.
Yeah.
That's correct.
We're gonna pay for it, one way or the other. We're either gonna take most of the stigions and Gilbert's spend Houston at one point five, drop a million or whenever we can find a million to bring it up. So, I mean, you're gonna pay for it one way or the other. You're either gonna, if you have a plan, you're gonna pay for it one way or the other, so.
Agreed.
If you do it properly.
The big, the big difference picture, the big, the big, the big diff- the big difference, though, is that the approach over the last couple of years has been, okay, we know we're not gonna have enough money coming in to cover our expenditures, so we'll make a transfer from another source of funds, whether it's from savings, just in general, um, or whether it's from like the Texan overpass funds that came. And so you're right, that one way or another, we're paying for it. But the difference, the difference, though, in doing it the way that we're recommending doing it, is that we actually budget it that way, which means that we're gonna have to make cuts to the budget in order to actually budget it that way.
Well, another way to look at it, if I may, is that, i- if I may, we're sacrificing the other funds operating to support the health fund side of it.
But that's the difference.
Does that make sense?
But you're gonna have to come up with it somewhere.
It should be part of the.
Correct, but when you come up with it somewhere, you're not sacrificing something from the budget.
But one year.
You may not come up with.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. Which quite, which quite frankly.
A good way to do business.
I agree a hundred percent.
The things that come up where you have this extra money should be used for one-time things. This is gonna be a continuous thing. It needs to be part of the budget.
And that's correct.
I disagree with y'all. That, that, that's our recommendation. I mean, it hasn't been that way, but that's where we're, I mean, it needs to be, and that's, and that's what we're recommending going.
From my perspective, that's what it should have been, so.
And Gilbert?
Yes, sir.
I may, are you recommending that this gets done in the next fiscal year? Are you saying we need to make some cuts right now and increase rates on the city?
Mr. Jeff, um, Councilman Jeff said, three, four weeks ago, when I was doing this. Three, four weeks ago, when I was doing this. I was feeling like twenty twenty one was a possibility. But after three weeks later, um, it's gonna be pretty hard to do the full. For example, I'm not worried about the other funds. I have more concern on the general fund side. That's seven hundred ninety four thousand dollar hit. Um, it it all depends how uh. We develop the budget. Is it possible? Yeah, but something has to give. Worst case scenario, I think there's a possibility that we can do it over two years, but we have to adjust it for the inflation. I don't want to get behind either. And and just to go back on the previous conversation about, well, we can fund it and out of due respect, everybody has their opinion and that's that's great. Yeah, we can continue doing this methodology, finding money on year to year, but when you have a situation like this happening in COVID nineteen. He, I don't think we can afford no million dollar comes from another fund. And because they're gonna, I need to have liquidity to those funds to to take care of those operations. So I think it's it's time that we get right with this. And I think it's no different than any mechanism that we have in our our enterprise fund or if we're gonna provide a service, I think that service should support itself. And that's just come from my financial background. But back to your question, the answer is that I think it's gonna be hard for twenty twenty one. We're gonna try. But, you know, we got some other competition, uh. City manager talked about compensation plan, I mean, the comp, uh, yeah, compensation plan. It still has to be talked about.
Mayor, you have a question?
Yes, even though it's too early to to see it. Part of the of the of the change in our risk manager. Was for them to look at everything we're doing and possibly find savings that we haven't realized before. And I realize it's too early to depend on any of that, but I would hope that 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 is a process that we're gonna be going, uh, looking at through.
Absolutely. And that was gonna be my, that was gonna be my comment. So all of these assumptions that Gilbert just shared assume that we keep the program as it is now. Um, but we know that there are gonna be opportunities soon, whether it's through a formal RFP process to sort of put out the bid, you know, who our PPA is. You know, there's, there are different things that, um, our benefits consultant is gonna help us with. Where it might not just be us coming up with more money, but it is a quote unquote saving. But I think it's a topic of saving that sometimes this saving that we're referring to that they might help us find. It's not necessarily a saving, but they might be able to help our our lower our delta. It might be able to limit our our decrease, for example, when they help us with the with the stop loss, right? I'm sorry, go ahead, Gilbert.
Can I inject something real quick? And I think it's important to understand that, that. The gap we're looking at Lockton and us and HR is that. Remember that graph I was showing strictly medical and drug claims. That doesn't count stop loss insurance, any other thing. That's strictly. Medical and drug claims. Okay? So you still won't have that. If you have too high deductive, you won't have that trend right now. So what I'm talking about is closing that gap. If Lockton comes in with some other savings, what it's gonna do, help us offset these other indirect causes like the claim causes, the insurance. The administration costs and everything else. That's the savings gonna apply to there. But when it comes to medical and the drug claim, we really have a trend in place. And and uh, so that's where I'm talking about on the revenue side. Lockton will come in and find some savings. But I see those savings going towards the indirect cost for the operating this. Plan. Does that make any sense?
Sure. Thank you, Gilbert.
I think we're on the right track, so.
Yeah, we just wanna do it right. Anything else, Gilbert?
No, sir.
That was really good. Thank you for that. Um, next up, we can go with Joel or the chief, which whoever whoever wants to take it on. Uh, is the chief even on? I don't, I don't see him.
I'm here.
Okay. Do you wanna go next? Go for it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. First of all, let me just check my uh, technology. Are you seeing uh, my PowerPoint?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. What this is, is a not a repeat of what I did uh, a couple of months ago, but this is a amended. Uh, full racial profile and report. And just to kind of go back and recap. Texas law requires that we do this racial profile and report. And that this be presented to the governing body each of each law enforcement agency before March first of each year. Now, this amended report was completed on time. Um, what wasn't done by March first and what we we were given grace period was. Actually coming back and presenting the updated version uh, to to you all. Uh, this report is a compilation of data gathered as a result of motor vehicle traffic stops made by officers of the Victoria Police Department. And then it goes on to explain, you know, what a motor vehicle stop is. And then officer captured that required information when those stops result in a warning, ticket, citation, or an arrest. Now, the amendment was required because what we found when we did a full annual arrest audit, which we do it every year. It revealed that the original report, which we did in January, underreported uh, the arrest data. Uh, traffic stop arrest data is found in two locations. We collected first for ticket writers electronically and then manual data sheets. If the traffic stop, what we found this year was the traffic stop evolved into an offense arrest. The nature code was changed to the offense and no longer captured as a traffic stop data. Now, this uh, updated data did change uh, other captured categories slightly. Uh, the biggest change was in the arrest and I'll get into that in just a second. Uh, to avoid any potential problems of this occurring in the future. Uh, the data collection methodology has been corrected to ensure that all rest information is collected and it's audited. On three separate occasions annually uh, to prevent this from reoccurring. Uh, so with that, really what this ends up being is a full new report because almost everything changed slightly. Uh, the total traffic stops was sixteen thousand three seven.
We lost you.
Chief. Go reconnect in a second.
After he finishes the report.
You have any question?
Any question? Now, he uh. He completely got disconnected. Joel, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah. Go ahead and uh. Maybe get started with yours. I don't know how, I I don't wanna delay. Hey, Derek, can you go um. Meet with the chief and and James next door, so they know that Joel's gonna go? Thank you. Go ahead, Joel.
Okay, just a moment.
Thank you for dressing up, Joel.
Oh, thank you. All right, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Council. Uh, can everybody see my presentation at this time?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Um, well, I'm just gonna go over a a list of projects that we've been working on um, in the C V B. Um, again, we've also been taking part in some of the the COVID nineteen efforts for gathering information on our community. Uh, just a little bit, that's included in this presentation. We, uh, to talk a little bit about the new explorevictoriatexas.com website. Uh, update to our wayfinding signs, uh, our work on our new visitor guides and brochure racks. Um, designations from the state office of the governor, including our film friendly Texas and our current working on the music friendly community designations. Um, and then some COVID nineteen related impacts to the community and and what the C V B is working on right now. If you go to explorevictoriatexas.com, you will see at this time our our new website. Uh, there's some new features on there. We worked with a website vendor uh, called, they're known as Sapphire, they're sapphire.com. Uh, they do uh. Have built and host sites for a number of a lot of DMOs here in the state, a lot of destination marketing organizations. Uh, including some of our our peers like San Angelo, Conroe, Waukesha, Hachey, Laredo, uh, so so similarly sized the C V Bs. Um, some new features on the website. We will have, uh, we do have an itinerary builder there. Uh, so if you go to the homepage and that's uh, in the um. The header of the website, so that'll be included on every page. You can click there to plan your trip. You can add attractions or dining or lodging, uh, as well as events. Um, uh, unfortunately, right now, our calendar events isn't really built out. We don't have a lot of events. We're not really posting any events at this time. Um, because unfortunately, uh, I'll touch on later, there's been a lot of um, either uh, cancellations or postponements. We do have, uh, of course, probably the biggest section of our site is all our listings, uh, hotels, motels, RV parks, dining, shopping, nightlife. Uh, as well as meeting and sports venues. We will have, uh, we do have um, resources, forums to fill out for meeting planners. Or sports planners, um, as well as, you know, an about section with some some facts on the community, our listing, our staff contact information. And of course, to go under explore a lot of our attractions. Um, so uh, it's a, it's a fantastic site with a lot of features. I I hope you can have some time to to explore it over the coming weeks. Um, and our staff will be continually be adding content to that site over the coming weeks. Uh, we have also just recently completed uh, some repairs to our wayfinding signs around town. Uh, we do have three types of signs. Uh, majority of the ones that you'll are the ones that you'll see on the left. The large brown with the green, uh, we do, uh, had those done in two phases, in phase one and phase two, uh, back in twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen. And we do, did consult with text dot. Those are all text dot approved and text dot approved locations. Um, so the uh. Uh, there, the number of locations that are on there, the materials that the sign is made of are all conforming to text dot standards. Uh, we do have, uh, the signs also in Riverside Park. Uh, those are not on text dot roadways, so they can be a little smaller. They include a couple of more locations. Um, and we do have um, also three signs in downtown Victoria um, that. Point to different spots around downtown, but uh, those signs were either uh, replaced for for content. Uh, we did have some uh, new locations like the Children's Discovery Museum. Uh, since, in the meantime, since the project was last done, they have found their permanent location. Uh, so they uh, were included on the new signage, uh, some repairs to some uh, bases for any signs that were leaning. Um, sometimes the bases are compromised, uh, due to, some of them were compromised from Harvey, um, or just, you know, a lot of rainfall or high wind events. Uh, can compromise. So a majority of those signs that really needed repairs around town uh, were were attended to. And that was performed by Synergy Signs and Services who did uh, did handle the phase two of the the sign project uh, back in twenty fifteen. Um, another project we're also working on is updating our visitor guide uh, to fit more with the style and branding of uh, our two uh, other publications. We uh. Uh, refer to this as the the trilogy and the visitor center, um, with the visitor guide, the visitor map and the old Victoria driving tour. Um, so the new visitor guide will will fit more with the branding um, of the Explore Victoria logo. It'll fit more with the colors and the fonts of the other two materials. Um, so of course, a lot of updated, um, you know, attractions to be listed in there, um, dining location, things like that. So uh, we are. In 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 the final phases of uh, uh, making final edits edits to that and uh, finalizing photos and and we'll get those in production here in the near future. To to match with everything else. Uh, we are also um, have handled. Have at this point taken about half of the uh, old bring your boots brochure racks that you may have seen around town. There's, uh, we're, we're, uh, they're in the hotels and some attractions and even city facilities like City Hall. Uh, we're gonna be uh. Uh, changing to those racks you see there. Um, we also have Explore Victoria stickers that we put on the side. Um, that uh, so these racks will uh, fit more with the branding. Um, so the bring your boots racks will will be retired. Um, and all of the uh, major rack locations around town will will fit with the uh, Explore Victoria branding and those materials that'll that'll be stocked in there. Uh, some other initiatives we are working on at this time. Uh, we were in recently in December, we're awarded our film, uh, Texas Film Friendly designation. Um, we are also working on our Texas uh, Music Friendly designation. Um, so uh, just some facts on those. Um, the great thing about the the Film Friendly Texas, the purpose of that is it is uh, to establish uh, basically a point of contact within the community for. Uh, film production companies, directors. Um, so they know that when they come to that community, if they're looking at that community. Uh, that there will be, they'll be welcomed, that there is individuals within the city government, um, who could help them get filming permits. Um, and uh, make sure that process runs smoothly and they don't, they don't run into any um, uh, resistance or any friction in the community. Um, so there's, there's a lot of cities designated on this. We're a little, uh, we're catching up to some of those. Uh, there's over a hundred cities. Uh, that have already received designation, even a couple in our area. Um, there were uh, three things uh, to uh. Need to achieve to get this designation, um, attending a film friendly workshop, um, submission of photos of area locations. Uh, for inclusion in the film commission database and then passage of administrative forcible filming guidelines. Um, along with the filming permit, which will will come from from our office. Uh, and we did achieve that designation in December of twenty thirteen. The Texas Music Friendly is is a newer program. Um, currently, there's only ten certified communities. Um, it's a few more steps for that uh, process. Uh, we did host a Texas Music Office sponsored workshop in October. Uh, did invite members of the live music industry and related um, or live musicians and uh, members of the live music, you know, related industries. Had about thirty, thirty to forty attendees, which was pretty well attended for a community of our size. Um, register with the Texas Music Office. Um, to establish a liaison um, in city government, which will be our office, the C V B. And a liaison within that department, which will be myself. Um, and then sign a mutually agreed upon M O U that just um. Says that we'll share information with them, um, at least twice a year on our music industry, you know, how many live music venues we have, how many live musicians, radio networks, radio stations. All that kind of stuff, um, that that it's just an open line of communication and and uh, information sharing. Um, the last step, which we are working on at this time is to, uh, the most important step is to create an advisory board that will meet regularly. To discuss issues in the community. Um, the interesting thing about the Texas Music Friendly is it's 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 can be different in every community. Um, just depends on the feedback that you get from your live musicians, um, from those in the live music industry. Um, and it's really a a program that's meant to um. Make the live music industry a very viable uh. Tool and of economic development, a lot, a very uh, employable sector within the community. So that's a very long term program. That's, you know, that that can. Change over the years. I mean, we're looking forward to getting that off the ground and uh, you know, having those networking events with our live musicians and. And seeing what they think could could be helpful in this community to uh, help that industry out. Um, and again, the community's decide on the key initiatives. Um, and of course, a big part of that is gonna be hosting and regular networking events. Um, to where those in the live music industry can offer feedback. Just some COVID nineteen related um, things here in Victoria. Um, this is obviously changed since uh, since this presentation was put together a few weeks ago, but the. Uh, you know, major events, cancellations, you have Riverside Ride, Riverside Food Truck Fest. Uh, we did have a uh. Uh, what was looking to be a great weekend of golf here in April, um, which included the N A I A Conference Golf Championship. Um, also not included in this, uh, but just a few days ago, we got word that the Southern Texas. Um, PGA Little Linksters and Junior Tour, which is a partnership that we have to bring them here, um, for the last several years now. They will be canceling. That was gonna be April twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Um, of course, Warriors Weekend, a lot of our arts groups, all symphony events in April. Um, then those are your cancellations. Right now, we're still looking to see, um, have for the Texas Mile, what their plans may be uh, for this coming spring. Um, and then some other big spring events that have been pushed into the fall, including the annual quilt show. That's gonna be now in August. Um, Apollo McFadden, now that's gonna be in October. Um, so so it has basically stripped our our events. Uh, from our calendar for for the foreseeable few weeks, coming weeks. Um, how the C V B, how we can help utilizing our social media to promote um, residents to to. Help out, you know, attractions, restaurants, retailers, um, you know, if if there's any way to purchase gift cards online or order. Um, from the restaurants that offer delivery, carryout curbside, um, shop with retailers online or or as far as some museums or arts groups, purchase a membership or. Or donate to them. Um, you know, if there was an event that was canceled, maybe forego a refund, you know, to help them out. Um, you know, our office is in regular communications with our lodging properties, um, to see what role they can play um, as this situation. um, to see what role they can play, um, as this, uh, situation develops. Um, and then promote ways that the citizens can enjoy themselves that, you know, we've put together the old Victoria Driving Tour, you don't even have to get out of your vehicle. Um, you can access that online at historicvictoriatexas.com, um, where the old Victor, Driving Tour has, we have a listing of, of all the, the stops on the, or all the, uh, the homes on the tour. The Victoria Trail Through Time interpretive displays, you can either, um, you know, enjoy those from, for your vehicle and, and we also have information on that on historicvictoriatexas.com. Um, so, so finding ways to encourage, um, our residents to keep that, those physical distance distancing guidelines, but still, um, get out and, um, you know, keep their spirits up over these coming weeks and, and do things to, to try to get out of the house, but at the same time, follow the guidelines that have been, that have been set forth in the last few days. So again, just a review of, of kind of what we went over, um, and I'd be happy to, to answer any, any questions at this time.
Joel, this is Enzo.
Hey, this is.
I don't know if Derek's back where, where he was, but can, can you talk a little bit about, uh, the roles that you all can play, especially with a new website, uh, in just getting people information about what there is to do in Victoria? Uh, and where I'm getting at is that typically, of course, CBB spends their dollars trying to advertise to people outside of our community. But we think because of everything that's going on, that we need to make a more intentional effort for them to focus their strategies on local, um, so that they, so that locals can know what's going on, um, as we go through this COVID-19 recovery, if we want to call it that. Um, and I know that, I think you and Derek have discussed some ideas, um, but in big picture, either you're, you or Derek can maybe talk a little bit about that.
Absolutely. Um, you know, one of the things Derek and I have talked about is, is the staycation, the idea of a staycation, promoting that, um, you know, and some of that content we're going to add to the new website. Um, our, our itineraries, things, you know, and even when you think of itineraries, you're thinking of travelers, primarily people coming from outside the community. But our focus could be in the coming weeks to, to have several different themed itineraries just for Victoria residents, but also that, you know, adhere to those social, uh, physical distancing guidelines. Um, and how we can utilize the new website, um, with, you know, it's, it's a very dynamic website where we can, uh, create a lot of different content, it's a very responsive CMS. Um, and it's a 24/7 agency that, that can actually make any changes that we need to. Um, but how the CBB can, yes, we talked about how, um, we can play a role and, and, and it's, you know, not only just having them get out in the community, but, but be that source that people go to, um, because, you know, there are a lot of, plenty of great sources. Um, you know, the, the city of Victoria's Facebook page is doing a wonderful job. The Victoria County Public Health Department with the, the kind of, you know, essential information from, uh, for anything related to COVID-19, but the CBB, the Explorer Victoria page, got a great following, over 20,000 followers, you know, how we could be a source on what people can do to keep their spirits up. Um, and, and to keep, uh, you know, going and, and to keep, um, uh, cause when, when you, when you keep the spirits up and you, you keep, um, them having, you know, some enjoyment, it, it makes it easier to, to, to feel less stir crazy and, and adhere to those, those physical distancing guidelines.
I'll add to, to that one thing, uh, Joel has also been reaching out and working with a number of his colleagues here at the city and other departments. Uh, he's going to be working through social media with the Communications Department, uh, to try to not only take advantage of the large following on our, on, on the CBB social media, but to take advantage on the city's, uh, overall page as well. And even in person, prior to the, the coronavirus sort of limitations that we're dealing with now, Joel went and worked with utility billing so that the one office where every new resident of, of Victoria goes to turn on their water, now is stocked with relocation guides and these same brochures that you saw about what to do in Victoria. We want to make sure that, um, our convention and visitors guide, Convention and Visitors Bureau is, uh, is geared toward our residents as it is toward our visitors.
Joel, this is Jeff, I, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Have you given much consideration to Boot Fest or are you still just on a wait and see?
We are, um, at this time, still planning for the festival. Um, we have some, made some adjustments, uh, we did, uh, extend our vendor guideline, or, or vendor deadlines. Um, those were going to be due on March 30th, we extended that deadline, uh, those deadlines, excuse me, to April 20th. Um, we did, uh, also then extend the, um, the acceptance email out till April 30th, um, to which then, a- after which the vendors could pay. Um, and that's again, those dates are all subject to change, of course, because we want to adhere to the, the guidelines on, uh, you know, the city facility closures and everything. Um, and then, uh, we did, uh, extend the, uh, the time period for them to pay. It's typically been 10 business days, we extended that to 20 business days. Uh, so we did have to make some adjustments there, we are looking, uh, at our entertainer contracts right now. Um, and, uh, how we can, you know, you know, hopefully this, this, this situation is, is over in the coming weeks and months, but you know, if you, you just want to protect yourself against all of the unseen, um, how we can address COVID-19 in those contracts as well. Um, that's, that's mostly been a major part of our planning right now is, are the vendors, um, and the, uh, entertainers, but Derek and I have also been talking about creative ways to get our sponsors, you know, keep communications open with them, this would be a time where we'd really be, we're communicating a lot with them, sending sponsor packets and, you know, it's just not a great time to be, you know, sending a request to, you know, be a sponsor of Boot Fest, but how we can have meetings with them, some Zoom meetings, especially our regular sponsors for, you know, from, who've been there for years and, and how we can communicate with them, how we're planning, um, at least for the festival at this time. Um, to where we're, you know, focusing on, you know, the, the really important things to the community with COVID-19, but, um, still, still keeping the wheels on the, the planning for the event going.
So how are you starting to address just logistics of the festival itself? If there's still fears of COVID-19 out there? And I'm thinking specifically about the Kitty Corral, all those. Um, I, I can't recall seeing hand washing stations around.
All those. Sure, well, that's something that we could definitely look, look into is, is increasing the hand washing stations. Um, you know, if, if, like I said, there, there's, there's no restrictions in place, but there's still fears. Um, talking with our, our ride vendor about sanitation, how regularly, regular sanitation could be performed. Um, a- and if we have to do any kind of markings, you know, for the lines for the kids, like you see in, in all the retail stores now. Um, that's, that's, that's a great point, that's something that, uh, conversation that we haven't really started yet, but that's one that probably will need to be addressed and that's a great, great point, um, for the logistics.
And how's this all work with our fund balance for the, for Boot Fest?
Hmm, um, well, at this time, with our fund balance, you know, the, the, the expenses that we would have right now, um, would be primarily just entertainer deposits and there should be enough in that, there's enough in that, um, fund balance to cover that. Um, again, we were looking at, you know, sponsorship monies coming in or vendor payments, um, coming in to also, you know, augment those things that we need to pay for in this fiscal year. A, a lot of those things can be, um, those, those agreements for certain logistical providers can be pushed off into the summertime, um, as far as the fund balance goes when it comes to the entertainers. Um, there's enough in there to cover what, uh, the checks we need to cut for those entertainers.
Yeah, and, and I'll add on there, uh, Councilman, you may recall that we went through a budget amendment, um, in January of this year to solidify that we have funds for Boot Fest 2020. And we discussed during those presentations that we would come back as part of the budget process and recommend going back to the annual allocation that existed several years ago in order to kind of keep it going. And so the funds are there for a Boot Fest 2020. Um, the only issues would be the ones that Joel verbalized in terms of cash flow and the timing of when we generally get some of these vendor payments and when we pay things out. Uh, but I would imagine those to be very small. Uh, obviously, if CDC continues to recommend social distancing, by the time that comes around, obviously, we would have a conversation about just not having the event at all, quite frankly. Um, but we're hoping that the CDC guidelines aren't extended, um, that far out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Joel? Okay, thank you, Joel.
Thank you very much.
Chief, are you back on? If we can't get the chief, we can, we can just, oh, we're correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Where, is it possible for the chief to come into this room?
He needs to, he needs to manage his presentation from his computer.
He couldn't just ask for the next slide?
He could, if James wants to stay in this office.
All right, where's your slide? Where's your PowerPoint?
Oh, there, okay, so they are up and going.
Okay.
Not there, where is it at on your computer?
Hey, James, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, I'm looking for his PowerPoint.
Where, where is it at?
It's, okay, if we can't figure it out in the next 10 seconds, we're just going to put on.
Oh, Ricky gets snacks.
Personally liked it to me.
We're, 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 we're got it, we're starting now, go ahead and start your slideshow.
Got it?
And then show your, there you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council, do you see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Just go to where you left off.
Third page.
He probably kept going. Next page.
Right there.
Apologize for that. Technology problem has got me, but James saved me. Uh, continuing where I left off, this is the slide where we begin by total stops. As you can see, we have a breakdown of, uh, male, female, race and ethnicity. Uh, was race or ethnicity known prior to stop? Remember I told you in the past that this is important, that that yes be lower than the no. Um, and then breakdown of the reasons for the stop are listed. And then, uh, the report requires that we identify street addresses or approximate locations for the stop. Those are all listed here. Was a se- search conducted and as you can see, I broke those numbers out and the vast majority of the time that the answer was no. Uh, in those times when the answer was yes, this is a breakdown of the reason for the search. Then we identify whether or not contraband was discovered and then the description of the contraband, uh, the result of the stop. This is where I want to point out the big discrepancy. In the prior report, it was, uh, listed as 203 arrests. The actual number was, was 886. And so that changed a lot of the other, uh, categories as well. Again, the total arrest totals being 1,041 versus 293. And the arrest was based on, and you can see the breakdown of the vehicle, of the penal code traffic laws. And then lastly, whether or not physical force resulted in bodily injuries used during the stop, vast majority of the time, the answer is no. Again, even with the revised, uh, report, uh, the, there, we do note that, uh, as far as assessing the report itself, that the department, uh, does have a general order concerning bias policing. It prohibits racial profiling, the department is in compliance with state law, um, and concerning racial profiling and racial profiling with the complaint process. And the data reveals that, uh, no conclusive indicators of systemic department racial profiling. And I'm going to try to end it before it, uh, drops off, but do you have any questions? I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
I have a question, Chief.
Yes.
The, uh, section where it says, did the arrest, uh, cause, uh, was bodily injury involved? Is that bodily injury to the officer or the other person?
It would be the other person.
Okay.
And if there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and stop my sharing portion of it and, uh, thank you for, uh, uh, tolerating my, uh, brief technology mishap.
God bless you.
Before we move forward, we're going to have an executive session tonight. I don't think there's any anticipated action coming out of that.
Correct, no, sir.
So, before we go into that session, I just want to take, uh, time, uh, to thank you, our citizens, for all you're doing during this time. I know it's an incredible disruption to lives and human convenience. And, uh, I just, uh, hope that you know that we're all working to try to bring your lives back to normal as soon as possible. So I'd like to tell you to look out for yourselves and your families, look out for your friends and neighbors, and we'll all get through this and we'll get through it together. Victoria's special, if you're a citizen, it's special. God bless you, God bless our citizens.
Thank you.
Well said, Mayor. Wear a mask.
The council will recess now and have an executive session on the seventh day of April 2020 at 6:47 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. This is an executive session in accordance with Texas Department of Justice 561.087 and discuss or deliberate the offer to a financial or other existing, to a business prospect that the county seeks to have locate, stay or expand in, near the territory of the city of Victoria and with which the city of Victoria is conducting economic development negotiations. Thank you.
We're calling in for the session.
Yeah, Jeff, do you have to call into the line or you?
Yeah, well.
As soon as we hang up here and you call something, we're getting.
I have it.
Okay, yeah, just call that as soon as we get out of this meeting. We, we're going to take a short break.
All right.
All right.